Thanks, everybody, for joining. We're doing this again. We're meeting for our regular Regional Digital Equity Plan workgroup meetings, our coalition meeting to talk about the goings on. And so we've got some updates on our planning and grant activities. These are going to be really interesting. I think everybody's going to enjoy that part. And then we've also got a calls for action. So this is where we're going to be asking you all to help us out with some of this stuff. And then we're going to get a chance to hear from Computer Corps' Donna Walker-James. This is a great organization that's been working out of Northern Virginia and Alexandria and Arlington. But the great news from her is that she's actually working statewide. And so we actually get to engage, you know, have the opportunities to engage her in the work that they've done, offer some Q and A, as well as a coalition update, and closing comments for anybody. So thanks, Randy, for joining us. So with that, I'm going to jump right into our updates. So as we've talked about before, on the planning side, we have engaged the University of Virginia School of Architecture's Masters of Urban and Environmental Planning students in the Quantitative and Qualitative Methods classes to help us with some planning activities. And this has been going incredibly well. In fact, there's Sunshine Nathan from PHA, who we got to do a focus group with some of their residents. So the Qualitative Methods cohort, they have planned five focus groups with different populations. As I mentioned, we actually had a chance on Tuesday to meet with residents of a Piedmont Housing Alliance facility, which was amazing. We also got to have a focus group with the Jeffersonary Board of Aging's clients at their Hillsdale Drive Center during one of their activity days. And then we're working towards a focus group with ACPS Bright Stars and Family Support. Those are going to be with families that have some demonstrated needs. We're also going to do one with YETI Community Center. That one's on the schedule for April 3rd. We're really excited about that one. It's going to be a really interesting one. And then we're working to do what might end up being ironically for a digital equity focus group, a Zoom focus group with middle school students that are participants of the Star Hill Pathways Program out of the UVA Equity Center. This one, we're really excited about because we don't really get an opportunity to engage youths very often. And so this is going to be a really great opportunity to work with youths. I like to tell, and I shared this with the students, I just tell them, what is it that, you know, what is the outcome? You know, you guys are going to do this stuff for us. What is actually coming out of that work? And this is kind of how I laid it out for them. It's understanding of barriers, that's barriers to digital access, and their relationship to different populations. So we know that we're going to hear a lot of the same things in different groups. But it's important for us to have an idea of what are the ones that impact this group more than others? And how does that relate? What are the barriers that we don't know about that might show up in lots and lots of different places that we didn't expect? The other thing that we're looking at is guidance regarding low-hanging fruit. Sometimes you hear about a problem, and you can just reach out, and you can grab it, and you can fix it. And so we want to know, what are those, what are those low-hanging fruit? And if it's not low-hanging fruit, what are the ones that we need to start prioritizing? What are the ones that we can put it towards the front of the list and ones that we should consider? Maybe we're not ready to address, or ones that they can wait for a little while for one reason or another? And lastly, it's providing case studies and understanding of outreach. And there, what we're talking about is having, as we all know, we've got a boss somewhere, whether you're at the top of your organization, and your bosses are donors and other higher-ups, or whether you're middle management and you're just trying to get your program rolling. We've all got bosses, and being able to explain a case study, being able to explain, this is somebody, this is the story of somebody's experience and how we can have an impact on that. That has huge implications for advancing policies. And then understanding outreach. We don't know until we ask how the work we're doing to do outreach on these issues is going to be received. And so having that opportunity to hear about, how did people learn about a digital equity program that they were involved in? So we're really, really excited about these focus groups. The other side of that is the Quantitative Methods cohort. They're doing data analysis. They're doing some, you know, they've got R installed on their laptops, and they are doing real hard data analysis. And what they wanted from us is data. And we were able to provide them some good stuff. So we've got a school broadband survey, which I didn't know that the school's here with us today. But that team, every year, they do a survey of Alamo County Public Schools families, where they ask during the registration process, and not everybody answers all the questions, and that's fine. But they ask, what is your current internet status? And they grade it straightforwardly: fast, I can stream video on my internet connection without difficulty; slow, I can't stream video without difficulties; and none; and unknown. And that data, we were able to isolate it and aggregate it so that it is aggregated to the census block level. So we're not giving away anybody's addresses. We're not sharing any personal information. But we are giving a sense for what is the landscape for fast and slow internet throughout Alamo County. And from that, they can overlay demographic data. They can overlay other economic indicators. Some of that's going to be coming from the next bullet. That's the American Community Survey. That's census data. And then we also have been running this speed test, and many of you have helped spread the word about the speed test. And it comes with a sentiment survey. So we've provided both of those, and we've stripped addresses and contact information. So the students are just looking at points, points on a map that gives them an idea of what are the speeds that are achievable in a given area? And then how do people feel about their broadband? And then the last one is something interesting, and that's what they brought to me, which is the use of public use microdata. This is really, really detailed data that is still conducted by the census, but it goes a little bit deeper than census, and it looks at cohorts that you wouldn't have expected. Honestly, I don't know enough about this to tell you, but the students do, and they're really eager to explore that. So again, I wanted to offer them, what is going to happen with the work that you guys produce? And so I explained it as this: actionable analysis leads to policy analysis. If we can see differences in different geographic areas, we can explore. What is, you know, let's say Vermont's doing this way better than we are. We can look at the policies in Vermont, and we can say, hey, how is Vermont behaving differently than we are? And can we do the same thing? Legislative advocacy, obviously, after we've done the analysis, we've seen what Vermont is doing better than we are. We can go to our legislators. We can go to our local bodies, and we can say, hey, these are things that we should be doing differently. Administrative advocacy, like we said, we've all got a boss. We've all got somebody that we got to ask permission to. And so if we have to go and ask somebody, and we've got good data to back us up, that's going to have an impact. This kind of data can also drive new program development. So as we're looking at the data, if there's something really clear, an area that nobody's addressing, that is a barrier that we should address, that we should look at, it might be a new program we can develop. And for existing programs, it can help focus, especially when it comes to geography. If you've got an outreach program, and you realize that all of the trouble is isolated to one geography, you can focus those efforts and really make an impact in that specific area where the problem is. The other thing we wanted to update you guys on is ACP outreach grants. So I didn't include the old slide. The old slide specified that the FCC was going to give out $70 million, and that they were planning for 200 to 400 awardees. The data actually, the selection actually happened, and it was $66 million total with just 77 awardees. And what that tells you is the FCC under, like, did not expect how expensive all this work was going to be. And that means that they also, for the ones that they awarded, often gave a little less. So for us here, we asked for $730,000, and we'll go over what that represented. And I'll be clear, we were aiming for an outside-the-park home run. We were aiming for a, just something that would light this whole place on fire and give us the opportunity to do really, really big things. So the fact that we got a double isn't something that's going to send me back to the minors. I'm still really excited about the potential here. I have to submit a new budget with our new allocation of funds. So that's what I've got in store for me, and like I said, we'll talk about it in just a second. The other thing is that we don't have any word on whether we were granted access to the ACP Navigator Pilot, which gets us access to the National Verifier. And if you'll recall, when we're signing people up for ACP, right now, the process is we walk them through, going through a website, and then they wait however much time it takes to get a response. And hopefully, they call us back, or they can get through the process on their own, if they, if they're deemed eligible, to get enrolled. With access to the National Verifier, that process, which could take days, becomes minutes. Because right there, at the same table, we can walk them through applying. We can get them verified, and we can get them enrolled in a plan. So we really, really want access to this. I understand there's a lot of organizations that are pressing the FCC to open up broader access. So hopefully, that comes soon, because I think that's going to be, it's going to have a real big impact on our ability for our navigators, who we're going to hire, to be effective. So let's take a look at what we were originally planning. We were looking at $260,000 just for navigators. We were looking at $250,000 for canvassing. And that's just doing, you know, a march through neighborhoods, through rural areas, putting materials on people's doors, and just getting the word out specifically about events we were going to be holding and about the programs that we want them to be aware of. We were looking at $60,000 for a direct mail campaign, $27,000 for digital display ads, and $24,000 for SMS messages, and $7,500 for events. This was a big, big grant with a big, big ask. How's it going to look? We're going to zero out canvassing. It was always a very, very expensive and low-yield thing, but it was the kind of thing that we wanted to be able to do to make sure that when we had an event, the communities that were near that event were going to get word about it. We're also going to zero out direct mail. Direct mail is a really challenging one because it is low yield, but it is often, for some populations, the only way you're going to reach them, especially if you're otherwise relying on digital marketing. If you don't have a cell phone, if you're not frequently online, then you're not going to get a text message or a digital display ad. And so direct mail was something that we wanted to be able to do. But at $60,000, it's almost as expensive as all of the other marketing that we were planning on doing. So we're going to zero that one out. And then we're going to zero out the event. Now, that doesn't mean we're not going to do canvassing, or direct mail, or event. It means that we, the coalition, are going to find solutions for piggybacking. So if you have teams that do any sort of canvassing, we want to make sure that you guys have materials in hand that you can use to distribute information, either about events or about the programs, the ACP program. If you guys do direct mail, then we're going to ask, and we're coming to the call to action in a second. You can hear it. We're going to ask for space in some of your direct mail every once in a while. And this might also mean expanding our coalition to just hearing from, getting a little space on other people who do direct mail to target communities. And then events, everybody holds events, big or small. You might have a daily event, a weekly event. Expanding the opportunities for some of the navigators to have access to these events, to have access to the materials that are going to be used to promote events. That could have another strong impact, because I think that if people know, hey, maybe you haven't made it to the last, you know, fall festival that we throw, but if you know, hey, we're going to have some digital navigators there. They're going to help you save money on your broadband if that's a problem. It might pull a few more people that wouldn't have otherwise showed, or at the very least, it'll give those that do show up an opportunity to have access to our navigators. And then still, we're looking at a funding amount that is higher than our navigator spending was already. And that leaves no room for our digital displays or SMS. So I'm going to spend some time with our budget, see where we can trim to make this a reality. And then at a certain point, you know, we might be looking for additional funding. I want this to be a really successful program. If it's a small program, I think that it can be a really successful small program. If we have funds to make it scale, then I can think, I think it can have a tremendous impact. I wanted us to set goals at bringing our ACP enrollment in the area from 15% up to 75%. I'm going to need to look at what are the realistic limits to what we can do with the funds that we have. And so I'll be spending some time, and if anybody wants to help me out, you know, I've not built a whole lot of budgets, and I've not paid for digital display ads or SMS meds. So if anybody wants to volunteer some time, I would gladly send you the draft budget and receive comments on what you think we need to reprioritize or what we need to change to make it fit within our target allocation. I see some people dropping stuff in the chat, and I really appreciate that. We'll head over there. But the big ask is a call to action for engagement. So over the next few weeks, hopefully, we will receive a notice of award. Excuse me. I don't know if you all can hear that, but my phone was ringing. Hopefully, we'll receive our notice of award very soon. And I'm going to be releasing an RFP to hire our navigators. That's going to be priority one. We're going to move the marketing kind of downstream just a little bit. I want to get our navigators in, hired, and trained. If you know of somebody that has excellent people skills, that is really, really good at connecting with people and has a passion for helping people get access to services that they need, let me know. Navigators are best when they're passionate, when they are from the community, and when they have the ability to make, to put that time in, to make those appeals, to be consistent and regular in the way that they interact and contact people. They don't need to know a whole lot about digital equity. That we can train. But just to get people, to recommend people to me, shoot me an email if there's somebody that you think we should contact. Once we've got the RFP out for those two roles, we're still planning on hiring two. Shortened budget or not, I think two people is going to be the right number of people for this. And we're still hoping to have them on the street in May. So that way, we've got the entire summer to be out there contacting people and getting our, getting our feet wet on this. This is a two-year grant, so we're going to be doing this for a while. But again, if you have people to recommend, that's big. Once we have them hired, we want them to have every opportunity to engage. The model is going to be embedded several days a week. So at least each one's going to have at least two days a week where they're going to be embedded in a location. So if you want to offer us some desk space and access to clients, that is something we can talk about. And then two days a week, they're going to be doing appointment-based engagement. They're going to actually be contacting community members, meeting with them, and getting them enrolled in person. So we need, once we've got our marketing pathway open, we need help getting the word out about those programs. So you'll hear more about that as we build it out, as we get it scoped. Again, anybody who wants to help me out with the budget side of things, absolutely reach out to me. And if you have experience doing a large marketing, digital marketing effort that's going to have a website as a hub and help setting up with telephone lines, all those things, I would appreciate help on those. So that is the big update. Anybody have any questions on those? I don't see any hands popping up. All right, Donna, did you send me your PowerPoint? I think Donna's frozen on us.
No, I'm, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
It's always embarrassing to not have your PowerPoint ready for a, for a digital group. So I do have it, but it's got a few wonky slides in there. But let me, should I just share my screen? Is that easier?
I think you can, yeah.
Okay, so apologize for the.
Let me do a quick, let me do a quick introduction.
Sure.
So Computer Corps, so the other news that I didn't share is that last month, I was able to go to the, is it really last month? Gosh, I think it is. Last month, I was able to go to the Net Inclusion 2023 Conference. This is put on by the National Digital Inclusion Alliance. It's an incredible organization. I hope to have several of their staff join us to talk about digital inclusion. And it was a great time, and just as I was leaving, just as I was, I was, I was heading towards the escalator to leave, I heard two women talking about how they were really upset because it seemed like they were going to be doing the digital inclusion planning for Alexandria and Arlington, and they weren't going to have access to state funds. And I just looked at them, and I stopped them right there. I was like, hi, I'm Jason. I'm doing digital inclusion planning in Alamo County. We need to talk. So it was a really great conversation, and I was so amazed to learn about Computer Corps, which has been around for 24 years, and just pulling this straight from their website. Since 1999, Computer Corps' mission has been to prepare underserved adults to realize career aspirations with foundational digital and professional skills. And the, what you see there on the screen, just incredible results. And they do highlight, if you can't read it, they're in the fine print. They do highlight this is pre-pandemics or pre-COVID data. So we don't really know what the impact is here yet. But a program that has helped 5,500 adults since 1999, it has given out, it's small on my screen, so I know I can't read it.
I have some updates to the numbers.
Oh, awesome. Well, then I'll let you do the slides.
It changes all the time because we have so many students. So, okay, let me share the screen, and then I can share some live, our signup screen also.
Yeah.
Okay, is it, make sure it's doing its thing here.
Yeah, we've got your screen.
Okay, not the part I want, but we're getting there. All right, bear with me while I find my PowerPoint I was just working on. If you've done a lot of Zoom presenting, which you probably all have, it is sometimes really hard to find where you just were a second ago. Okay, well, I'll talk while I'm looking. So as he said, thank you, Jason, so much for the introduction. Yeah, I think we were actually saying, the state of Virginia didn't do this, and he's like, Virginia? So we were all together at a conference for three days in San Antonio, but we only met him in the last five minutes, which shows that we don't, you know, we talked. We met with organizations like ours from around the country. Some states are really big on the regional connections, and some are not. You have a nice regional. What you're doing right now is really cutting edge, you know, in your region. And I said, hey, we would like to do this for Northern Virginia, but can we jump in and, you know, find out what you're doing? So I kind of also asked to attend your meeting, so I appreciate that. And what I really wanted to talk about is two things we do, which I don't think you do. So we don't do, you always hear about the three legs of the stool with digital equity. So you have broadband and internet access. You have and then devices. We really don't do the broadband. You know, it's really through this group, National Digital Inclusion Alliance, that we, you know, found out about Affordable Connectivity Program and the funding for it, and we'd like to do it. We also put in an application for about $200,000 to the FCC for Northern Virginia, but we did not receive it. So we're sad. And then we were complaining about just the $10,000 that's being offered. But we will, we will go, we haven't submitted yet, so we'll see, because I think there's only so much to go around in Virginia. And then I'm stalling while I'm looking for my slides. Where did they go? Bizarre how it could just disappear like that. Okay, well, I didn't have, when Jason asked me to speak, I didn't have slides anyway, so I'll just talk. So we teach basic computer skills to, really to the whole state of Virginia now. We used to just be Northern Virginia when we started in 1999. And you all know this field, but you know, the concept is we teach to adults 18 and over. And in 1999, you would expect a lot of people wouldn't know about computers, but it's still true. We get droves of people. Before COVID, we taught in the classroom, so we really were limited geographically. And after, you know, within a month or so after we shut down, we started teaching online, and that has broadened our ability to teach what we teach and how many people we teach. And we have about, we used to have about 200 people a year. We're up to 600 people. Our students are, you know, we're here in Northern Virginia. It's a very international group. We kind of got known in the international community. And so we have people from over 100 different countries, about 70% women. And of course, all people who don't have digital skills and are willing to let their guard down and let each other know they don't have digital skills. We do teach online, but we give everybody who expresses their interest, we make sure that they have an opportunity to get a free refurbished computer, and we can meet with them one-on-one, again, mainly here in Northern Virginia. But if people just can't figure out Zoom, they can't do it from home, even using FaceTime or anything. We do have a way. We can meet with them in person, and occasionally, we do in-person workshops. But other than that, we have about 180 students at a time for three 10-week semesters per year. Join us in the evenings on Zoom. We hold, so if you can, you have to imagine Monday through Thursday classes. We have two sessions every Monday through Thursday evening. And those sessions are Word, Excel, PowerPoint, Google Workspace, a couple that are just like confidence on the internet, confidence with internet security. And then we do teach intro to coding, intro to coding with Python, and then intro to cloud computing. And these more kind of advanced classes are not really high level. They're more like people who live in the world, even if they're not digitally savvy, have heard of these things, and they've heard that there's jobs there, so they need to find out what the jobs are and what the, what even the words mean. So they're not just English language learners. They're also learning tech. Tech to English translation is a lot of what we do. And I almost see one of our missions as saving people from going and spending really a lot of money, even though they're low income. They spend a lot of money on certification programs that promise them things when they don't even really understand the vocabulary. Even if they have a certification, they've been told by employers, oh, yeah, that's not the good one. So we're trying to like unveil a lot of things for the students to help them make the right choices and learn things about, you know, just everything about computers, from turning them on to some of the more advanced concepts. And we have a really great online community where we've been with these students now. We're in our 10th online semester with them. So it's just, it's been a fascinating process. I've been at Core about three and a half years. So I've been meeting people, meeting all these students. And we also, we have a staff of five. Three or four people are former students. And two are, one's from Afghanistan, one's from Syria, and the other one's from Uzbekistan and speaks six languages. So we have a lot of language diversity there. And I don't know if you missed anything by not seeing my slides, but I can show you, maybe I'll take a couple of questions, and then I can show you how we register people online, if that's of interest to anybody here.
Yeah, so I will start on questions, and I'll start by just prefacing. My mom, she worked for a publishing company in Arlington, actually, in the 1980s. And she was laid off in the '91, '92 downturn. And she came, you know, and she was, English was a second language for her, and she came with a lot of opportunities to learn about publishing and computers that I don't think she would have gotten before because of that, that publishing job that she had. But when she left, because she, she did all that education in person, sort of while she was, she was doing the job, she, when she would apply for stuff, was told like, yeah, that, that doesn't apply. Like, we need, we need skills verification. And so my mom, in 1992, signed up for all of these classes, just did hours and hours, spent thousands on these classes. And to your point, she got those certifications, and she was still told, no, that doesn't, that doesn't really matter. And luckily, she was able to sort of parlay what she had into a part-time job that then became something a lot bigger, and then became a career, working actually for county government. So how do you guys help navigate people through sort of the myriad of workforce challenges when it comes to knowing what the right approach to gaining skills and certifications and those sorts of things?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. We, so when we were founded back in the 90s, the concept, the person who founded us was teaching, she was kind of right out of college, and she was teaching a group of adults. And when she came to Alexandria, she started in a church basement, and she said, the goal was really, she realized that a lot of them didn't know how to turn on their computer. They just didn't know anything. So the original goal was just, a lot of jobs are going to require digital skills. Let's teach people some Microsoft applications. And it wasn't even called that in 1990. And then now, we're teaching all these things that can lead directly to careers in cybersecurity and coding and different things. But we're still very, we have a couple of things where we're, our, our mission statement says we're helping people with their career aspirations. So everybody's coming for different things. You'll definitely find other nonprofits in the country and places you have to pay for in Virginia where they focus on like more. You'll definitely find other nonprofits in the country and places you have to pay for in Virginia where they focus on like one thing. Python careers or cybersecurity careers. We're more like each person comes to us with a different aspiration. And then we try to provide a variety of different classes. We try to guide them as adults to pick which classes they want. And then when we find out about a certification that kind of falls at our beginning level, like North Star was a big topic of conversation at this conference we went to. There's a North Star Digital Literacy Certificate that most of our students can get. And we're using some Coursera classes, but we don't do the more advanced ones. Yet we have one collaboration with Virginia Commonwealth University, with the Virginia Adult Learning Resource Center and with some professors at the university and some community college teachers on a PCAP certificate, which certifies Python coding. So I don't know if that got to your question, Jason.
Yeah, no, that was great. I appreciate that. And just walking through, you know, it is a different landscape with organizations like North Star and then groups like Coursera, but also our local community colleges and local universities. Jen, you've got a question?
Yeah, thanks, Jason. Thanks, Donna, for, oops, I'm trying to show you who I am. I'm over here and then I'm going to put my hand down like that. Okay. I'm with the Health District and we're working on digital literacy and access as a means to improve health. And I wondered if any of your courses dealt with smart, how to use a smartphone, not just a desktop computer?
We, we've had that class before, like a workshop. I don't have anybody teaching that right now, but one nice thing is we just have tremendous flexibility and being able to offer things. What I find in terms of digital literacy is trying to get people off their phone. So I know for, for so many things they need to access, so many people do use their phone. But we also want to, you know, not off it totally, they need it probably while they're using a computer, but we're really trying to convince people, you know, that, that we can give them a desktop or we can give them a laptop. We can help them get home internet service so that they can access even more things like practicing Excel on an actual computer, but so many people just want to stick on their phones. So it's interesting, but we, we haven't leaned into that.
I think one thing to consider when we, when we think about the right solution for the right populations. Almarle County is 726 square miles. A lot of it's rural. The penetration of cellular coverage isn't great. Alexander and Arlington are, I'm pretty sure, 100% exclusively urban. And so cellular coverage in those areas is different. And it, and it came up during, during one of the focus groups that repetition of what you're going to do is really important. And that skills, especially digital skills, can be lost quickly if you're not doing them. And it came up both in the context of people that live in the rural area where they're not going to be grabbing their phone every time because that's, they don't even have coverage and they don't have Wi-Fi. And so that's not something that's going to be all that useful. But then in a more urban context, everybody had, almost everybody, I won't say everybody, almost everybody had a phone and everybody had pretty good familiarity and where they were looking for assistance was in computer acquisition and computer skills acquisition. And so, so Jen, I think you're you're right that for our area, there's going to be a large population that they need that basic smartphone usage assistance. They don't necessarily need to advance beyond that, but that's something that that basic level is something that they're going to need. Sunshine, thanks for, for the note. I appreciate you joining for us. And I will, I will reach out to you about helping with the communication side of things. Donna, you wanted to update us on some of the numbers. And so I can put up that slide again that I had and you can update what, what the current numbers look like.
Yeah. Have I been sharing my screen this whole time? Because I did find the PowerPoint.
You have been sharing and if you take a look, you can hit.
Sorry about that.
No, it's okay.
Okay, so I won't go through it, but I'll show you what was here. There was probably a few numbers. So the 24 years, we're in our 10th online term. We, we have 34 different classes. We've given away 1,000 computers since COVID. We do have a help desk, a digital help desk that has been useful and we're teaching people how to respond to tickets and be tier-one navigators. We have a very international population, people from over 100 countries. And this is our little team. And just this, a quick numbers update. Okay, so this is what, we don't charge any fees for our computers or our classes. So that's one reason we have so many people. And then I just want to show you logistically how we do things. We use Airtable. So this is some of the classes we teach. And here's the rest of them, but we use, you know, we can, we've gotten good at using digital tools to cram in a lot of classes during a limited amount of time each week. So each student takes one to four classes during the week and for 10 weeks. And then they can come back because that's something you said about needing to keep refreshing the skills. We just, we used to graduate them, wave goodbye, and then a new group would come in. And now they're just part of the family. They just keep coming back and taking different things.
Great. You mentioned 50 volunteers. How do you guys do volunteer recruitment?
It is, it's interesting. There's a lot of word of mouth. We have some people who've been with us five to 10 years. So they just, they're our stalwarts. But again, each volunteer is only teaching maybe one day a week. We have one guy who teaches more, more than one class. And we do work with all the local colleges, which has pluses and minuses because the college schedule is not always the same as ours. But a lot of these people we call Zoom administrators. This column here is probably really tiny, but a lot of those are, you know, a lot of them are student, are children of volunteers and children of students who grew up here. So they know more digital skills than their parents. And you may have found this, but the last people they want to teach are their parents, but they're happy to teach other adults. So, so we do a lot of internal recruitment and then we, we do advertise on all the local volunteer Fairfax, volunteer Alexandria. There's the local volunteer agencies and places like Volunteer Match that are national and the Hands-on Network. And then we, we did join a, since you can see my screen. We have an online registration system now, which is here. And we teach the students because it's ironic to have an online registration system for people who don't know computers, but we, can you see this? This system is called CourseStorm. Okay. So we have classes advertised here. Again, they're all free, but the system was set up. It's like a cost model, so it markets the classes constantly. And students can sign up for classes and has little descriptions and this is public. So if you have people in your area who do have, I understand they have the internet, you know, accessibility issues, but if anybody wants to sign up for our classes, they're, they're welcome from across the state. And this is public and it's on our website as well. And we get people trying to get in there from Utah and other places. All Virginians are welcome.
That's incredible. The idea that you guys are making this available to all Virginians, which means that some of the people we've got on the call right now, who, when they hear from clients and residents that they need some digital skills, the idea that we can, we can point them to Computer Core, I think is a really, really big deal. I want to make sure, does anybody else have any other questions for Donna? All right. Well, I'm going to ask a few more because I'm, I'm still interested and I still love understanding this better. So it sounds like all of your classes are in person?
No, they're all online.
Oh, all online. Okay, that's interesting. So so then you've got some, some base level understanding before you can get into the, the program. How do you guys handle those earliest, like, how do I turn the computer on? Classes?
Right. And I just, it's really hard for people to wrap their heads around, but almost all of our students, 90%, are those people who you feel, you know, who don't know anything about computers. We get a few who feel they know a lot about computers. So very typical interaction is, okay, just go on a laptop or desktop and get in your email and I'm going to send you an email to get your North Star set up. And they have no idea how to use a desktop or laptop to get their email. So they're very cell phone oriented and that may be a Northern Virginia thing or an urban thing. We do have an, the ability to meet one-on-one with clients and sometimes to like, open the office so that people can come in. We're still hybrid, actually, in our office and we have a small shared office space. But we do have one day a week where people can come in. But again, about 90% of the people, they, they join us directly online. Because also, maybe it's an urban thing as well, but people who have absolutely no computer skills, they have people in their family who have the internet, who have a computer, who have computer skills. And they say, you know, mom or dad, you're the one in the family. You don't know anything. Go, go to Computer Core. But, but they do have supports and other people feeling it's a good idea for them. So I think that that helps a lot. We do wonder if there's still people who we're not reaching, but we, you know, which I'm sure is true of anybody, but we do reach a lot of people with very low-level skills and we still, there's people that might come to the office, like the, the people who are having the most difficult time understanding the computer and understanding Zoom. They might come three or four times, but as soon as they're Zoom-able, then we send them home and they love it. You know, they're like, oh, good. I don't have to drive or park or spend money for gas or get a babysitter. So they love it.
That's awesome. What kind of marketing are you guys doing?
It's, that's a good question. We do, you know, before COVID, we just had this myth in our heads that we had to do print. And we had to take it out into the community in print because people aren't, you know, they're not using computers, so therefore you have to get to them another way. But again, this phenomenon that their friends and family are using it and they all have smartphones. We do use four social media outlets and we revamped the website and use it more heavily. So it is ironically digital and word of mouth. Over 6,000 people now we've served since nineteen ninety-nine and they're all still, you know, for the most part, they're still in the area. They were not really a mobile population, so we were talked about a lot.
That's fantastic. So word of mouth as a, as marketing is great, of course, because it means that what you did worked and then they, they told their friends. You guys did that analysis that I, that I featured earlier. Let me go ahead and put that back on.
The wage, the wage analysis. Yeah, and I'm way behind on doing a new one, but I'll tell you, when COVID hit, March 13th, 100% of our students were out of work instantly.
Yeah.
There was no, you know, there was, it didn't matter what they did. They were, everybody was dropped. And then they've been very, very slow to get those jobs back or even, you know, sometimes not as good as they had. So we do have students who, now it's been a couple of years now, so we really need to go back and we're crunching down on data, you know, the next month. But I don't have new stats on on the wage rates that students are getting. We have a few outliers, like, you know, my, my wonderful one, someone was driving Uber and now she's an AWS instructor.
Wow.
Makes about 85,000. But, you know, she was a bit of an outlier. That's what we would love for everybody. We get a little more of people who, you know, there's someone who was a, I think she was working as a CNA and now she's working as a receptionist at the community college. So small incremental gains. Someone who was able to take a promotion. A lot of our students are offered promotions and they turn them down because they don't have the digital skills and they're afraid. So people who have accepted promotions like at Home Depot and at preschools, places like that, they're very, some people are very eager to switch careers, but they're also really afraid because they also, they already bring in the wages for the family wherever they're working, which is almost always underemployed and, you know, low-paid. Almost all our students, except for the COVID phenomenon of all losing their jobs. So most people are working and they work like two or three jobs. And there's definitely lots of, and they may not be even available in your area, but here, you know, almost everybody drives Uber. You probably can't find anybody who hasn't done Uber Eats or Postmates or some delivery service.
Yeah, it's, it's a phenomenon that I think is present here. I don't know if you, if you live out in the, if you live out in places like Earl'sville, you might probably have a little bit of trouble getting people to bring you your food, but, but yeah, this is, this is really fantastic results. And I appreciate the demographic breakdown. You know, 70% women, that's incredible. 95% students of color. I think that that's, it's really telling about your all's commitment to, to doing this work and keeping it accessible. So thank you so much for your time. Does anybody else have any questions? I want to highlight a couple of things, you know, some of what, what Donna described, that's digital navigation at its, at its most basic is just pointing people through the, to the right resources or pointing them to the right classes, helping them find that right choice that's going to be for them and making that a very personal thing where you're not just sort of running through a script and then giving people what the script tells you to give them. But instead, you're actually learning what are their goals, what are their, the, the things that they're trying to achieve and how can you get them there? And even if that's a small goal first and then moving up to bigger goals, that's, that's the process that we have in mind in the long term for our digital navigators. The digital navigators we're hiring through the ACP Outreach Grant. We have to keep them limited just by the nature of the grant. We, we kind of need to stay a little bit narrow as we start, but over time, as we get more resources for them to share about, we are excited for them to have those opportunities. Obviously, some of this stuff is happening in our area. And so we need to find where is this stuff happening? And how can we get connected with them? And some of it is not happening. And so the device refurbishment is something that I know there've been pockets of it that spring up. Right at the beginning of the pandemic, there were a number of organizations that expanded. They scaled what they previously did. That might have been targeted to just students or targeted to just specific isolated populations. But most of that has petered out. And so we're looking at solutions to bring a more comprehensive device refurbishment channel. So that's something that we're really excited about. And I did want to touch on, Donna mentioned the $10,000. We had Chandler and Cole from DHCD on the last month. And they shared a lot about opportunities. We had an opportunity to talk to them a little bit more directly about what that was going to look like. So as I mentioned before, the work that we're doing to develop a digital equity plan supplements and is in coordination with the state's digital equity planning work. The state had received, I believe at this point, $5 million to develop a statewide digital equity plan, of which ours, and then the Alexander and Arlington ones that Donna is working on are going to be a component of those plans. And, you know, it'd be wrong of me to not say that it's a little bit self-serving for us to make sure to throw hard elbows, make sure our plans are included in there because the funding decisions of what to do with Digital Equity Act funds, which I believe it's a $12 billion fund. Is it, is it more than that or lower than that? Is it higher? Yeah. So it's a pretty sizable pot of money that's going to be, going to be coming down, down the pipe and it's going to be coming through Virginia through the state broadband office. And so we want to make sure that the plans that we have are included in the state's plans. So that way they're going to be funding opportunities in the future. So again, just because we, we, we were, we fell a little short. We got that, that double instead of the, the outside the park homerun on the ACP Outreach Grant, there are going to be other opportunities to bring in funding. If anybody else has any ideas, anybody else has some money they want to throw around, I'm all ears, but, but the, the state's work is happening now through, as they've described it, the community action agencies. It's not going to be as detailed and on the ground as our work. Our work is going to include those focus groups, can include a lot of quantitative analysis. And in the future, it's going to include asset mapping. And I'm actually excited because next month, we're going to have the developer of the, a consultant who developed the Chicago Digital Equity Plan. And she's going to help us talk about asset mapping. If you don't know what asset mapping is, kind of join the club. I've been in planning for a little while now. I know what it's supposed to be. And yet somehow I've always struggled to really wrap my head around it. So I'm excited to have somebody else explain it to you guys that way. I don't make a fool of myself. And the other thing I wanted to mention, Donna mentioned $10,000. That was something that the state put together as a sort of a revolving option for, for, for doing a pilot of, of a program. I really struggled with that because the output of the case study of the pilot is expected by August. And that's a really narrow window to develop something. And so in conversations with Chandler and Cole after Um, and that's a really narrow window to develop something. And so in conversations with Chandler and Cole after last month's call, um, what we've decided is uh we're going to apply to hire an intern to write a white paper. Um, that white paper is going to describe the work that we've done. Um, it's going to include some of the county's uh specific work, including the development of the ACP Bridge, which is our Affordable Connectivity Plan supplement. Um, and it's also going to um include a discussion about this coalition um and how we put it together um, and what the coalition's work has been. Uh, again, the goal is get that case study published um and, and by August and hand it over to the state, so those components can be included in the, in the state digital equity plan. We're also going to um take advantage of, of having an intern over the summer for uh helping us out with doing more focus groups. And so that's kind of the, the, the other ask is if you uh or your organization, you guys didn't participate in a focus group and you think that there's a, there's a population that should be engaged, uh, let me know. Uh, we would love to do some more focus groups um through the uh, through the summer. Uh, those focus group, there's focus groups that are happening now, they fall under that, that UVA research umbrella. Um, and so there are all sorts of, of little caveats that we, we can't do this and we can't do that because they have to, uh, they have to abide by what UVA is willing to do. Uh, if we do the focus group um outside of that research umbrella, then we have a little bit more flexibility when it comes to how we're going to engage um, those, the community members and do we scale up or maybe we scale down? Maybe we go the other way. Maybe we've only got a, a single facilitator and one note taker. Um, and so we go smaller uh than what we're doing right now. Right now, our target is six to ten. So um, lots of options for more engagement throughout the summer, um, especially with that uh, with that ten thousand dollars that we're going to use to get ourselves an intern. Um, and then there are going to be some other opportunities that the state's going to extend to us. One big one, uh, the state is going to hire a consultant to help with their work. Like I said, they've got five million dollars to develop the plan. They're going to hire a consultant to help them with uh certain aspects of it, including the asset mapping. So uh, one of the things that we've asked of them is access to the consultant. Um, consultants, uh, I've, all of you have worked with consultants in some way, shape or form. Um, they are a mixed bag of different things that they're going to offer you, different uh, uh, goals that they're going to have and deliverables that they're going to provide. Um, being able to help shape what the state's going to be asking of their consultant um, and making sure that the output is going to benefit us, that's huge. Uh, that really, really helps us. Um, I mentioned that to Donna on a call previously because I wanted to, to share that news, that the consultant isn't just going to be for the state, the consultant's going to be for us too. Um, I tell you, when it comes to that asset mapping, if I hear tell that uh, the, the consultant will do that for us and if I trust that the work's going to be as good as we want it to be, uh, then maybe that's something that we can actually just let the state take care of and give back to us. Um, so those sorts of things are really, really exciting. Um, and we're looking forward to um, to how that's going to play out over the next several months. Um, so again, uh, if, if anybody has uh recommendations for an intern, recommendations for navigators, recommendations for uh focus groups, um, reach out to me. Um, if I haven't touched base with one of you all uh in a while, let's just schedule a coffee uh and find some time to catch up and talk about um how we can better engage. Um, but with that, I'm gonna uh offer the floor, if anybody else has any updates that they wanted to provide about um, work that they're doing in the community, uh, whether it relates to digital equity or not, if anybody wants to share, feel free. I think everybody wants to get to lunch. Um, Donna, thank you so much for joining us. Uh, thank you, everybody that was on the call, Jen and uh, Sunshine for joining us earlier. Um, and we will look forward to doing this again in one month. All right, I'm gonna stop the recording.